Good evening. I'd like to call the twenty-seventh meeting of the Mayor and City Council on Monday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, to order at five P. M. Mayor Mo will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilman DeWalt, Councilman Cole, Councilman Sidnor.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
President Smith.
Here.
Mayor Mo.
All right. Next agenda item is approval of minutes, meetings on February first, two thousand twenty-three, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Does anyone have any corrections or amendments to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the work session for February the first, two thousand twenty-three, the twenty-sixth meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the twenty-seventh meeting of February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilman Sidnor.
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
President Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The next agenda item is the report of the Mayor and City Council, and I will start with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to have a lot of people here. It makes our job more exciting, and we get to make some good decisions as a result of it. I see that the Public Works people are here in full force. It's always a pleasure to have you here as our hard-working, essential employees that you are. A couple comments. Like this council, you, our top priority, including Public Works, is to protect our citizens and make it a safer city where our citizens can live and work, along with you and the Police Department. And you are essential in a lot of things. You're at all the events we have, and we have a ton of events in the city of Laurel, which makes the city of Laurel so special. And I believe that the sole purpose, or the purposes... I'm being timed too, so I only got five minutes, just so you guys know. The sole purpose is to get collective bargaining and to unionize. And the purpose of this hearing, not this hearing, but the purpose is to get the proper paperwork to the city so that we can pass an ordinance, and we could get it to Larry Taub, who's the city administrator, and he could write that ordinance just like I did on an air conditioning ordinance to our city charter. And all it does is, once we get that, then he puts it into legal form. It's usually not that long, and we already have one with the FOP, so it shouldn't take that long for Department of Public Works. And that's why it just seems like such a waste of time, that here we are, you're coming back, you're going to testify again, when all we need, all we need is to have that sent to our solicitor, Larry Taub, get him to draft up that ordinance, send it to the council, and we already know, and I already know, that all five of the council members, unless one of them raises his hand and says he's not for it, is for giving you collective bargaining and letting you be unionized. So that's what's very profound. That's what's very confusing to me, because here we are, when we first initially put this in, Martin and me originally put this in to be done, it was several months ago, and it's been delayed now till June. Well, our forefathers, our forefathers, it took a hundred and sixteen days to them to debate and to write the U. S. Constitution of the United States, and it's taken about this much more time just to get you guys unionized and to have collective bargaining, when we already have an FOP that's been having collective bargaining for almost nine years now. And it makes absolutely no sense to me on why this is being delayed, why they're waiting all the way till June to adopt it, when you have five council members sitting here that will vote yes on it, and it took only a hundred and sixteen days for our forefathers to debate and write the U. S. Constitution. I think it's a sin. Thank you.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell? Greetings. I just want to wish my council colleague, James Cole, gets well soon. March fourteenth, I went to the Patuxent cleanup with Congressman Glenn Ivey. Later that day, I went to a press conference in Annapolis for the Safe Harbor Bill to protect victims of sex trafficking. March fifteenth, I went to the Civil Rights and Elections Lecture at Goucher College by Sherlyn Eiffel, a civil rights leader. On the sixteenth, I visited Cylon's House, which is right there in Burtonsville. It's a Maryland-only consumption lounge and event space to date. On March seventeenth, I went to Laurel High School. They had an open mat, so I helped them prepare for an off-season wrestling tournament. Later that night, I went to the Knights of Columbus Patuxent Council Friday Fish Fry at St. Mary's Church. On the eighteenth, I went to Casey and Darrell's housewarming. If anybody remembers, they were two of the affected tenants from Patuxent Place, and so they were able to, you know, become homeowners and stay in the city after hunting for a long time, so that was a, you know, a great thing to see. The NCA finals happened for the Division One Wrestling, and so I had a watch party with Pilates Wrestling Team in Laurel High School at D. C. Own on Main Street. March twentieth, I went to the Greater Washington Region Clean Cities Coalition at I. B. E. W. Local. Later that day, I met with seniors at Willow Oaks Community with Councilmember DeWalt. On March twenty-first, I went to the Southern Democratic Club Swearing In Celebration at Forest Heights Municipal Center. Of course, I want to say as well, Happy Ramadan to all of those who celebrate. That day, I was shadowed by my lovely senior resident, Ms. Ellen Lyons. We went to the United for Justice Advocacy Day in Annapolis, and we also visited all of the District Twenty-One members. March twenty-third, I went to the Public Works Meeting at the Laurel Library. March twenty-fourth, I went to the Laurel Area Takeout Meetup at Jailbreak Brewery. March twenty-fifth, I want to say Happy Maryland Day. I went to the Charisma Food Bank Giveaway at Grace to Grace Church. I also went to the Community Resource Fair at my old elementary school, hosted by the top ladies of distinction, and there was several great resource guides there. I went also that day to the American Legion Post Sixty Spring Craft Show, and it was great. I was able to support a young Laurel resident who's an entrepreneur, a fourth grader, and she has a business called Kitty Cat Meow. I caught the tail end of the Laurel Women's History Month Black Authors Event at the Laurel Branch Library, and I wanted to give Ms. Kristen Johnson a shout-out for putting on a successful event, and as my kid said, I look to be there earlier next time. March twenty-sixth, I went door-knocking in Carrollton and College Park, and, you know, they have an election coming up in May. I do want to say that I spoke to Chief Hamel, and I was definitely going to make sure I brought it up to the administration as well, but just giving the chief a heads-up. Speaking to, of course, Councilmember Carl DeWalt, who's on the Public Safety Committee, we would appreciate being updated of critical incidents when they happen, especially, I think, most recently, it was the fifteen-year-old who was, you know, shot in Ashford, and, you know, I was notified by a constituent who was notified via Facebook. And, you know, so of course, several hours later, and I know speaking to the chief does something that we could definitely make happen, make available, so I definitely wanted to, you know, put that on the record that, just like many other municipalities, specifically Seat Pleasant, I know this is something that we can do very easily, and it also helps us, you know, keep in contact with the constituents, and, you know, as I mentioned to the chief, I know that some information is sensitive, and some information is also always changing, and so we just, you know, appreciate general updates and initial update when these critical incidents do happen. As far as, you know, I appreciate seeing the audience full. On February twelfth, nineteen sixty-eight, thirteen hundred black sanitation workers in Memphis began to strike and demand better working conditions and higher pay. You know, I bring that up because, you know, that was one of MLK's last fight. I know we talked a lot about MLK over the last years, and, you know, that was one of the last fights with the Poor People's Campaign. And, you know, I know we all have said we support, you know, workers' rights and, you know, that Public Works, and, you know, they are essential workers, but at the end of the day, you know, if we don't make a charter amendment update to enshrine that they have collective bargaining rights, you know, our words fall deaf because our actions speak louder. And so I hope that, you know, we can, you know, come to a consensus to protect the workers and not ask the workers to go to management or the workers to go to a union that they're not represented by, that they hope to be represented by. So I do ask that, you know, we as a body, you know, take this very deliberately because, you know, we're not playing with people's lives. This is very serious. Thank you.
Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, Mr. President. On May the fifteenth, I attended a Day of Empathy with Atlas Councilman Hawkins, Prince George County. Day of Empathy is a returning citizens coming back home and want the community to show more compassion for them as they return home and try to get jobs in the field, so I think that's very important. On March the twenty-fifth, I attended a Community Resource Fair, like Councilman Mitchell said, at Oakland Elementary School, sponsored by a top lady distinction. A lot of resources there. Just want to add one more little thing before I close out, Mr. President. As you know, February twenty-seven was the first time I heard about DPW workers wanting to unionize, and I don't have an issue with that at all. Then it came back before us on March the thirteenth, and what we said, that we don't have an issue with it, and the management wants to take some time to review some things. I think it's professional courtesy, as a person who decided a union, it was a union organized, to respect the executive officer of the city, to give them that time they need where they can... Excuse me, sir. We're speaking right now. Thank you, sir. So, as professional courtesy, that's our job as a councilman, is to work with the mayor administration, work together. We're not against the mayor, and the mayor's not against us. This is the legislation branch. We, like the councilman said, we write legislation. The mayor's executive officer, he enforced the legislation. And so the executive officer of the city, as a council member, I want to work with the executive officer to get the best job for all of us, so that's what I'm about. And so that's what we're here for today, and we're going to continue to work with the administration on my part, so I just want to put that out. I'm not against the union, and I want you guys to unionize, but if I, once again, but the executive officer asks for some time to get some things together out of courtesy, of professional courtesy and respect, because that's who you got to negotiate with when it's time to get the union contract. The council do not negotiate your contract. The executive officer and his administration negotiate the contracts, so there's a lot of things got to put in place prior to that. And like I said, as professional courtesy, we should honor that and not come here and try to downgrade another councilman because they don't feel the same way you feel. That's why I want to say thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. I'm going to ask that when people are speaking, we refrain from making noise over them speaking. We're going to give you the same courtesy and time when you come to the dice and speak, so I'm going to ask that you be respectful of everyone speaking in here. Thank you. Councilman Sidnor pretty much took a lot of the words out of my mouth. We were asked for a courtesy to give time, and that's just what we're doing, but, as I've said, to date, we have four council members that spoke publicly that said they support unionization. And that's all I'll say about that part. I'm not going to go too much into it, but you know my sentiments. You know where I stand on that, and I'll move on that. To end my report, I have been participating in the National League of Cities Conference in D. C., which is currently going on. It's a wonderful event, working with and to see how other councilmen and mayors and other cities, municipalities are doing, you know, what they're doing in their cities and how they're impacting their upper funds. And I'm looking forward to bringing back some information for our city. I had the opportunity to attend, well, I catch the tail end of the top ladies Resource Fear at the elementary school right outside of the city boundaries. Wonderful event. I'm mad I missed most of it, but I heard my other council members were there, Councilman Mitchell and Sidnor. It's good to see them out. And looking forward to road across when making this happen for you guys. All right. That's the end of my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple things. Condolences to the family and friends of Miss Sonia Thompson, lifelong city resident, volunteer here in the city. Our condolences to her and the family. Also, their memorial service will be on April the eleventh at twelve at St. Philip's Church. Condolence also to the family and friends of Mr. Philip Geis, longtime volunteer with several organizations. Also, his viewing will be this Friday, March thirty-first, from four to eight at Donaldson's Funeral Room. Did have the opportunity, and I want to thank Congressman Glenn Ivey for coming to the city. We appreciated hosting with him on the International Day of Action for Rivers. As I said, we try to do that every day and not just on that one day. Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School. Let me thank the P.T.S.A. for inviting me to speak and update them, as well as our chief, on things that are happening in and around the city. The, did attend the Prince George County Municipal Association Meeting held this month, as well as the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce Awards Gala. Let me congratulate Ms. Rosa Mayer, who's a volunteer here in the city, as well as a member of the Laurel Fire Department who was nominated and received the award, so congratulations to her. I also had the opportunity to attend and meet with County Executive Calvin Ball from Harrah County regarding some ways we can partner and how we can help each other, so I appreciate that. And then the Knights of Columbus Patuxent Council, twenty-two-two-oh-three, their annual awards ceremony, I had the opportunity to attend, and want to congratulate all those winners as well. And then on the twenty-third, we had the Laurel Police Department Awards Ceremony, and as well as the Prince George County Mayors Association later that evening. Also, to, they had a celebration of life for Mr. Bob Ross, who was the NAACP past president here, worked closely with the city, and I was, as I said some time ago, was sorry to hear the news of Bob's passing. Then on the last night, I did have, again, attend the statewide Knights of Columbus Maryland Council's Awards Ceremony, where some individuals from Laurel were nominated and given out awards. Couple announcements. On April the first at twelve noon, the extravaganza at the Granville Gooty Park. I suggest you get there early, because if it's twelve oh-five, usually the kids have already taken care of all the eggs, so that's on April the first at twelve, over at Gran Gooty Park. On April the eighth, at ten A. M., there'll be a Patuxent River Cleanup at Riverfront Park, and then on April the tenth, at four P. M., there'll be my time with the mayor at the Anderson Murphy Community Center. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we are moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, the General Public Hearing, which I will open at five-twenty P. M. Just a reminder that you have a three-minute limit, and also, as you call your name, just come up and please state your name and address for the record. All right, and I'll go first. Madam Clerk, is this the only list we have for sign-up?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. First, we have Ann Butler Jackson. Jackson? All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to tag team. We are both representing Job Corps here at the Woodland Job Corps Center here in Laurel, and I know Mayor Mo, you are familiar with us. First, we would like to thank Councilman Senor for the invitation to speak here, and we just have a gift for Councilman. We are a vocational program for youth sixteen to twenty-four, a free vocational program where our youth can gain trade, and they can also complete their high school diploma or earn their GED. So we're here two folds, Ms. Jackson and I, because we do have vacancies, but we just want to encourage those who know our youth, sixteen to twenty-four, that need a trade so they can have a substantial employment or they can earn their high school diploma. We are located at thirty-three-hundred Fort Mead Road, which reminds me, my name is Marcia Gibson. Thirty-three-hundred Fort Mead Road, and this is Ms. Ann Butler Jackson, thirty-three-hundred Fort Mead Road, Laurel, Maryland. We are right here in the community, and we want to serve our youth so that they can become productive citizens in our community.
Thank you. And so we have vacancies, approximately sixteen vacancies, available at the Woodland Job Corps Center. So we have residential advisors, H.R. specialists, academic instructor, full-time, as well as substitute, admission counselors, hotel and lodging instructor, career transition specialist, I.T. analyst, security officers, maintenance mechanic, driver, utility worker. So we have a number of vacancies to support our mission at the Woodland Job Corps Center. And most of these vacancies, qualifications, high school diploma, some of the higher levels like career transition specialist, any associate degree, as well as or bachelor's degree. For the driver utility, we'd like someone with a, we'd like someone with a years' experience, as well as, what's it called? Okay. All right. Well, that should be it for us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cortland Jones. We have, oh, here we go.
Good evening. My name is Cortland Jones. I'm a resident of Laurel, and I've been invited on behalf of Councilman Keith Sidnor. If I may, I'd like to provide this information that supports what I'm going to share. I am a retired educator of Prince George's County Public Schools. My last school was Greenbelt Middle School. I had the privilege of launching a literacy initiative at Greenbelt Middle School. It was well-supported by the community as well as the school. I want to be able to do the same thing in Laurel. I currently partner with Christine Johnson and J. Media Publishing. We just recently had a women and literature event at the Laurel Library. We had a financial literacy event at the Bowie Public Library, but we also want to do one at the Laurel Library as well. The document that you are reviewing pretty much outlines the activities that I have facilitated, both as an educator, as well as in the community, involving cartoon comic art storytelling, a bullying prevention workshop, as well as helping youth and adults write and publish their own books. So we want to engage youth and the community of Laurel in enterprise and entrepreneurship through the guise of literacy. We just want to help the community of Laurel promote and celebrate literacy, so that's my reason for being here today, and you have the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gino, excuse me if I pronounce your last name wrong, Renner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, council members. My name is Gino Ren. I have a proud privilege of serving as president local in nineteen ninety-four. Our union represents primarily public employees throughout the state of Maryland, and we have been responsible for having or securing collective bargaining statutes, both at the state and local level, over the last forty years that I've been in this leadership position. I want to commend Councilmember DeWalt, because you raise the same concern I have. I believe that everybody up on the dais was voted to run this city, and I'm perplexed as to why, when you already have a model collective bargaining bill, that we're taking so long for you to decide on whether or not you want to extend... It should be a matter of what, that you want to respect the request of your essential employees to exercise what I believe to be a human right, to sit down at the bargaining table and negotiate over the wages and benefits. I don't understand that. Then I hear a conflicting message, and correct me if I misunderstood you, that it's essentially up to the executive to make that decision or lead on that issue. Executives who, public executives, who stand in the way of the fundamental right to collectively bargain for their employees, in my opinion, is no better than a C.A.O. who states that their employees do not deserve collective bargaining rights. Now, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that's your position, but I would invite you or at least ask you on behalf of these workers as the mayor to expedite the process, let's get this bill passed. And I look for it on their behalf to sit across the bargaining table and negotiate with you and your administration over fair wages and good working conditions. Now, if you have the same concern about your workers as you claim you do, then you'll, you'll, you'll get this legislation on the docket and let's get it passed, up or down. And that's what I'm urging you to do. The time to talk and procrastinate is over. Your workers have suggested, not have, excuse me for going back for, I didn't expect to be here tonight, so I'm talking off the cuff. But your workers have voiced their concerns or their desire to bargain with you, Mr. Mayor. And you can do your research on us. We pride ourselves in partnering with each and every employer that we have contracts with. We represent the biggest public employer sector in Montgomery County. They're the largest in the state. We represent the Parking Planning Commission, which includes the Prince George's side. And we represent the Prince George's Library System. And you can ask any of those administrators and elected officials that have jurisdiction over those bodies that we come to the table with a will or desire to partner with you. So I'm not sure why the train has slowed down. I haven't received any legitimate explanation for that. But these workers' destiny is unfortunately in your hands. And I would ask you to respect their will and let's get this bill passed. And then let's sit down and talk about what's best interest for them because whatever their best interests are, are the best interests for the people they serve.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Next, we have a Kate Wright. Kate Wright?
My name is Kate Wright. I live at 14913 First Baptist Lane, a resident for 14 years and the Public Works Administrative Assistant for six and a half. Today, I'd like to share a story. On January 6, Mr. Nawas of Wilson Street had a sewer backup for the second time in the past few years. Despite multiple visits from plumbers and WSSC, neither could locate it. And the clog remained. He called Public Works for help, but the city does not maintain pipes. It could have ended there. But I recalled something Rob Furry once said. When WSSC took over the water pipes in Laurel, there were some exceptions in Old Town. Suspicions raised, I reached out to Robert Love in ECD to look for drawings. And I searched Public Works' own paper records. But we found nothing about these exceptions. Again, it could have ended there. Instead, I searched the internet for the chief engineer at WSSC. And knowing most organizations use a first initial last name email address, I found his email and I asked him for help. By January 24, WSSC had made plans with Public Works Deputy Director Tim Miller to replace the ancient terracotta pipes and take over pipe maintenance, not just under Wilson Street, but under a half dozen Old Town alleys with long-forgotten exceptions from 70 years ago. Mr. Nawas is one of Councilmember DeWalt and Cole's constituents. But given enough time, I could share stories of similar exceptional service to residents all over the city. I believe it's instances like this that the council envisions when you say you are proud of Public Works, when you say you support Public Works. And one month ago today, most of you said you support Public Works Unionizing. You said, but words without action are only words. Just as Public Works takes action every day to provide exceptional support, to go above and beyond what's required of us, we are asking the council to take action, to go above and beyond, to show your support by calling a special work session, to expedite Public Works Unionizing. There's no guarantee after this fall's election that the council will still seat members who say they support unions. And failure to call a special work session will delay Public Works Union from taking full effect until fiscal year 2025, more than 15 months from now, when this need not be the case. You have the power to do more than just say you support Public Works. Today, we ask you, go above and beyond for us, just as we do for your constituents every day, and show your support with your actions. Thank you.
Next, we have Lloyd Holloway.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to present something to Councilman Mitchell and Councilman DeWalt. What I've just presented to you is our draft legislation that we would like y'all to look over and take deep consideration into expediting this unionizing and collective bargaining for us. As most people know, my name is Lloyd Holloway and I reached out to MGO to get the union started, to protect my fellow employees. Y'all say we are essential employees, but we are not treated as such by far. And I think it's time for that to change. I'm here to protect my employees and stand up for all of my colleagues because we put our life on the line every single day, just like Laurel PD does. And they have their collective bargaining, they have their union. And y'all did that in no time. And we're asking for the same thing. Y'all say, you know, to investigate and try to push back to June, for what? We didn't commit a crime, so there's no need to investigate. We just want our rights, our rights and our equal rights to be unionized and taken care of. That's it, that's all, bottom line. Y'all say y'all support union rights, what's the holdup? There's no need to prolong it anymore. We can get to the table tomorrow if you want to and talk about it. But let's get it done. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Trevon McMillan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the councils. I'd like to thank you for the time today. My name is Trevon McMillan. I've been with DPW for about two years now. And what I would like to speak on today is the support that we have that you can see behind me right now. And we also have the support of our community, which I would like to show you. We have a petition that we have been going out each and every day, taking time out of our workday to provide physical proof and to show that it's not just us that want this. The community that we do good work, great work for, they support us. So if I can, I would like to, President, Mayor, cannot, Clerk? The community loves the work that we do. And we love to do the work for the community. I myself, I do a lot of work for the community. I'm a youth coach right there in Laurel at the Community Center. And it brings me joy when I have the support from the community that I'm providing good work for. Thank you, that's all.
Next, we have Ms. Ellen Lyons. Ms. Ellen, Ms. Ellen Lyons?
Good evening. My name is Ellen Lyons. And I live at 7901 Laurel Lakes Court, Senior Citizen Building. I am a resident of Laurel, I am a resident of the city of Laurel and proud of it. But what I'm not proud of is the leadership of Laurel. Two of the hottest issues in the city, in our city of Laurel, are rent stabilization and this union effort, which has been shut down by the mayor and council president. Shame on you. I see you both, SIC Mitch O'Connor and Donald Trump. And we're not having that in Laurel. We're not, we're not having that in Laurel. Neither of you care about us. You're too busy selling our city and you forget who has given you the power. The real question, the real question is, why are you here? You don't care? So why are you here? Taking up space and doing nothing for the people. I have seen council president come in in his sunglasses and then indoor. He knows what he's doing and so does the mayor, which is wrong. Therefore, I'm encouraging the city, the Laurel City resident, to take action this election and vote these two negligent politicians out. Power to the people and to the workers.
Next, we have Fred Smalls. Fred Smalls? Oh, I mean, just get around, I'm sorry. Well, Wilbur Nicholson?
Good evening. I come here, lifelong resident of Laurel, been here 69 years. And, you know, once upon a time, you could come talk to a politician like DeWalt, Martin, I even talked with Keith, talked with Francis, you understand? Trying to come, bring something to a head for the better of the kids and the youth in the community. And I spoke with the mayor the other day, he says, no, I'm not doing nothing. You understand? This isn't about me, I'm 69. It's about those kids that you can keep out of harm's way. Why would you want to put a tax or make a permit, make you get permits for a Boys and Girls Club that's already struggling to get funds to keep the institution going? Then you want to engage with a permit when somebody come to rent so the club can make money? Are they going to do that with Pilate, which does the same thing we do? When they have ballgames, they charge people, are they going to make them get permits? I mean, I just think they haven't given, the city hasn't given us nothing. They don't support the club at all. So why do you want to take from us? I mean, you know, these kids can't keep this place going on their own. We need funding. And we've asked, I've been denied because they said I didn't have a used occupancy permit. Found out that I did have one. Then they said, well, the place wasn't inspected. Well, they did inspection the other day. I had a violation because I had some old vet tires back in my shed. I took them out. Had a fire signatures had to be updated. We got that done. But no one still doesn't, I'm not going to say no one, but for the most part, the people that I talked to the other day said nothing. They don't want to do anything. And I'm almost feeling like the young lady that was just up here, if you're not going to help the community, then what good are you? That's all I have to say.
I have Alejandro Miranda. Alejandro Miranda?
Alejandro Miranda, we're with MGO, working with these workers, helping to get the right to be organized. And one thing that I don't get clear, because I've been hearing too much about courtesy. The worker has to be, you know, give the courtesy to the city. And one thing that we don't understand is, because what the workers are getting is right now is on, we were here a month ago on February 27. The next day, what they got is they called for a meeting that we call, that we understand is a union busting meeting because they bring the worker, they offer things that they were, they were telling you that they need here. And that, but we understand that what is the, is this courtesy to these workers because you offer things when they know that they need to sit down with you and negotiate a contract. That happened on, I believe it was March 1st. Then we had on March 16, a letter from Brian Lee, who sent that they're going to be open the door for the workers on Friday, March 31 and Wednesday, April 19, that the working can come and tell you what they need. But they told you already. They told you the first time. And March 24, signed up by the mayor, I believe, if I'm wrong, yes, signed up by the mayor, March 24, a grievance, I don't know if the worker they know about this, they got a grievance process now. But, but, but they don't have nobody who represent. It's like the police called me and tried to accuse me and I don't, and I go by myself. You know? So what they've been asking is, I know Councilmember Keith, you say that you are a union member, you know how the union works. You know that they need a representation. You know that they need the right to be represented by the union. That's the only thing that they're asking for. That's the only thing that they need right now, that you pass that law and give it that right. And like the president, the locals said, we are ready to sit down with you. And good faith, because that's what we do. We do the best for the workers. So I still understand why the worker has to go and ask the employer to give it the right. That's not how it does work. What they want is they want the you, the council, pass that legislation to give them the right. Because if they were under NLRB, we would already filed two ULP for unfair labor practice. But we, but they are not under the NLRB right now. So that's why we are here again. And we're going to come as much time that you, as long as you delay this, we're going to be here. And we're going to be, we're going to be doing this stronger. We're going to bring more, more people in the community. We want to do whatever we have to do in order that these workers. And I think Trevon, the other day you showed me, there was a kneel on the trust that you were picking up, right? You got the picture? That, 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 they've been working in a, in a, in a, in a bad environment. And they're essentials. So please, I don't think that you need more, more to investigate. They need to, you say that they are essentials, give it the right. Thank you.
We're going to close the public hearing at 5:45 p.m. And I'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 4-2023, a resolution to accept the report of the city Laurel No Kill Community Animal Shelter Tax Force authorizing the mayor to move forward with the planning, funding and providing a timeline for the completion of a no-kill animal shelter. Mayor Mo, do you have anything to add? All right. Are there any questions from the council? I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing on this at 5:46 p.m. And I will call on Fred Smalls.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Mo, councilmembers. I am here, as mentioned, to make some brief comments and encourage your immediate action on Resolution Number 4, 2023, No Kill Animal Shelter. This is an essential need, and not only the Laurel community, but, but in every community that cares about animals, period. As some of you may know, I led the task force many years ago to rewrite the Laurel Animal Control Ordinance, as well as I served on the Vicious Animal Task Force in Prince George's County as well. This resolution helps bring full circle the city's commitment to humane treatment of animals. So I encourage you, I'm not going to take a lot of time. You all have, no doubt, had a chance to go through the report and analyze it. I encourage you to take immediate action to the point of suspending the rules tonight and, and voting on it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else sign up to speak on this?
No, Mr. President.
All right. Well, I will close the public hearing at 5:47 p.m. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and go ahead with.
I'm sorry, this is the second public hearing, so we don't have to suspend the rule. So we don't have to suspend the rule.
I'll just make a motion that we, uh.
Can I get it?
Prove it.
Can I get a second?
A second, Mr. President.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo? Motion carries.
All right. Agenda item number eight, second public hearing with possible action on resolution number five dash two zero two three, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to set a date, time and polling location for early voting in the city of Laurel for the general election of November two thousand twenty-three. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. President.
All right, any questions from the council on this? All right, well, I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at six forty-nine P, five forty-nine P M. I'll close the public hearing at five forty-nine P M. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve resolution number five, twenty twenty-three.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo? Motion carries.
All right. Agenda item number nine, second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number two thousand and seven, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter eighteen, to update the permit requirements for sediment and erosion control plans and providing an effective date. Director Selby, do you have anything else to add?
I have nothing.
All right. Any questions from the council? I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open and close the public hearing at five fifty P M. All right, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty zero seven, two thousand and seven.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo? Motion carries.
Agenda item number ten, second public hearing with possible action on the Charter Resolution Number one seven seven, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, amending Article four hundred, administration of the charter of the city of Laurel to reflect the creation of a new department entitled Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management, adding section four six nine, director of the Department of Community Resources and energy, and emergency management. Uh, Ms. Pulley, do you have anything to add?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, council president, members of the council. I do not have anything else to add for this charter resolution. Thank you.
All right, any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I got a question either for the city administrator or for the city solicitor. What is our policy when we change a charter resolution? How many days does it go into effect before it take place?
A total of fifty days.
Fifty days, okay. Thank you, the city administrator.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Well, I read the record in, into the, uh, I read the title into the record for the second reading and I'll open and close the public hearing at five fifty-one P M. And I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve charter resolution number one seventy-seven.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilman Sidnor?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Mo? Motion carries.
All right, well, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned.